Welcome to the February 1st meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or a group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation, the commission members ask questions if any, members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into the deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application. Results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arrive in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or to call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead. The planning commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications with the city council making the final decisions. Please turn off all cell phones at this time. I'm going to call Rowan. Ms. Jennifer Jensen?
Here.
John Valas?
Here.
Shirley Sessions?
Here.
Thomas Doyle?
Here.
Taylor Ratchison?
Here.
Kena Andrews?
Here.
Nick Amberger?
Here.
Beth Rich?
Here.
Don Hembry?
Here.
Alan Cameron?
Here.
And Ann Liddell Lake. And on that note, we shall get started with application number one. 3116 Newton Drive. Is the applicant present? Okay with the recommendations?
Yes.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. Number two, 250 Yand Street. This application has been recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? In agreement with the recommendations? Anyone here in opposition, I mean, to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. Number three, Air One Subdivision. This application has been recommended for tentative approval. Applicant present? Applicant indicated he is in agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. Number four, SMHP Country Estates Subdivision. It has been recommended for tentative approval. Applicant is present and indicates he is in agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Could you mind pull the microphone a little closer to you?
It's on.
Is it working now? Hello? Yeah, that's good. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you, yes ma'am. All right, my name is Kimberly Laird, and what else did you need to know? Your address? My address. 6461 Creel Road, Theodore, Alabama, 36582. I don't know if I have an opposite. I would like to know what he's subdividing it for and to how many parcels, just some kind of information. Um, here is... I've lost my place.
Do we know any more than it's a two-lot subdivision?
It is a two-lot subdivision.
Do we know any more than that?
No, sir. Other than one lot is the existing, it appears to be a mobile home park.
It is.
And then the other lot is on the Creel roadside of the Alabama Power easement.
Mm-hmm.
And other than that, that's all we really know, is it's just those two lots.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, is there going to be a business there? Is this going to be a residential or... Ms. Laird, this is before us for subdivision. If it's not... Pardon? This is before us today for simply whether or not it's... Just to see if it's going to be subdivided? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and it's in the county. There is no zoning in the county, so...
I know, I know. I mean, it's kind of at the mercy, just trying to figure out what is he going to be doing with it. Well, I think the developer is present if you'd like to, after the meeting, speak to him about it. That would be fantastic. All right, thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition to it?
Hello. My name is Karen Rogers. My address is 6395 Creel Road.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just, my question specifically is, this is for proposed subdivision. Exactly what are they asking to be subdivided into two separate lots, or is it going to be 20 lots? Is it going to be, how specifically is, what is specifically the request for subdivision? So, currently, two lots.
Two lots.
So, currently, it is 36 acres, and he's requesting the two.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Number five, Bond Subdivision. This application has been recommended for denial.
Jerry Byrd, Bird's Urban Company, for the applicant. Applicant is the owner of the property. Purpose for this is son would like to build on Lot B, approximately where the turn is at the 60-foot building setback. I think you have one of these packages. Staff report calls it a flag lot. I don't necessarily call it a flag lot, because I will say it's an irregular-shaped lot. The reason I'm not a flag lot, flag lots normally are the 25-foot strip or 30-foot strip is normally parallel to each other, small until it makes that. The only building site is after you make the turn into the flag portion of it. This one, 25-foot, goes back, I think, 120 feet, 128 feet, and at that point is 60 feet wide. It is more like a lot on a cul-de-sac, which would be narrow in the front, widening out as it goes back. That's page one on that. The property itself, when the father purchased the property in 1997, the deed had it in three parcels, and page three shows those three parcels. Now, they are odd-shaped. I don't know why they were like that, but they're divided out. If the deed parcel A was a little bit further back, I think he could have gone and got a building permit to build back here and come out that blue strip, which is parcel C. Staff report also says there are no others in the area, no other irregular shape or flag lot. Page four, I've colored in, you see the site, this is right out of the staff report, the purple, the orange. Close to the site, there's this green one that looks a whole lot like ours, narrow, widens out, kinks over to the side, goes to a point, and then that little orange one, I'm not sure. There's, I think, two houses sitting on that little piece of property. I don't know how they got them on there. But this is not unusual for this neighborhood. The son would like to build there. If there's any consideration to help him out, that would certainly be appreciated. I think that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Staff have conditions, just in case we decide to...
Yes, sir, we do. And Mr. Byrd has been given a copy of them, but basically they are the dedication to provide 30 feet from the center line of Leatherwood, retention of the 25-foot minimum building setback line along Leatherwood Drive for Lot A, retention of the minimum building setback line where Lot B is at least 60 feet wide, retention of lot size information in both square feet and in acres, adjusted for the dedication, placement of a note on the final plat stating that each lot is limited to one curb cut to Leatherwood Drive, with size, design, and location of the curb cut to be approved by Mobile County Engineering and conformed to ASHTO standards, placement of a note on the final plat stating that any lots which are developed commercially in a joint residentially developed property must provide a buffer in compliance with Section 5A8, compliance with engineering comments, and compliance with fire department comments.
I'm okay with that.
But can I ask Mr. Byrd a question?
Yes.
Did you mention it was for a dwelling, or is it a commercial?
Oh, no, residential.
I thought I heard that, but...
Dad's residence, and they wanted to...
Yeah, I know there's no zoning out there. I'm just curious. Just to hear it. Thank you.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Byrd? Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you. Number six is 1204 Hillcrest Road, Volunteers of America. This application has been recommended for a holdover. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with that? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this? It most likely will be held over. If you would like to speak today, you can. It will be discussed again at the March 15th meeting. Is there anyone here to speak today? Is there anyone here to speak today in opposition to this? Thank you very much. Number seven is 3673 and 3679 Airport Boulevard. This has been recommended for a holdover as well to March 15th. Is the applicant present? Are you in a, have you read that? Are you in agreement with that holdover recommendation?
I'm in agreement.
Would you like to come down and speak?
Name is Jason Giscleire, represent the ownership Grove Cola Properties. Address is 16891 Jefferson Crossing, Prairieville, Louisiana, 70769.
Yes, sir.
In regards to number one, the tenants were given a month-to-month lease. New ownership gave notice to vacate the tenants when purchased. That real property has been vacated. There was a barroom, a billiard, and I believe a retail space. The new owners are not marketing that currently. And any new ownership, any new tenants will, of course, be retailer general office space in the rear. And as far as number two, identified an updated site plan that was submitted to the planning department.
And, Ms. Chairman, I did place on everyone's space something with number seven at the top, and this is an email from the Design Professional that was submitted on Monday, which includes a letter from the property owner explaining that the rear building is vacant, and if it is used, it will be used for retail or office only, and that's to allow us to determine parking requirements for the overall property. They also revised their plan consistency analysis to describe what they were doing on the property. And then there is a small version of the revised site plan, and we did look at the site plan, and we just identified two to three items that may have been concerned. One is that they will be building in addition onto the front of the building on the, if you're looking at the building from Airport Boulevard, it would be on the left side of the building, and it would come up to the parking spaces that face the building and eliminate the sidewalk in front of three to four parking spaces. Then on the west side of the building, or the right side of the building, if you're looking at it from airport, they are proposing two parallel parking spaces, and we asked that they, if this gets approved, that they coordinate with traffic engineering to make sure that those spaces are properly sized based on the ability to get in and out of those spaces. But we do have conditions available should the commission wish to review them.
Yeah, I'd like to see those.
I would too.
If they're from Louisiana, you've got everything you need, you think, just for us to consider those?
I think we have received everything that we need for this application.
There are too many conditions for staff to read them, too. We'll let you peruse them.
As applicant, seeing those, or just now?
I just got them. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Going to the next one, come back.
I suppose, as I say, do you want to move on to number eight?
I'll just briefly summarize the main issues. Where the building is being pushed up towards the parking, we would ask that those parking spaces be provided with bumper stops so that the cars will not run into the new portion of the building. If there are not currently bumper stops by the accessible parking spaces, we just want to make sure that those are provided so that the cars don't drive into the sidewalk at the wheelchair entrance, and there is outdoor seating in that vicinity. And then just to coordinate again with traffic engineering regarding the parallel parking spaces to make sure they are appropriately sized for the, a car to actually get in and out of them.
I agree with all those, absolutely.
You're in agreement with all of those conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Would you like to say anything else?
Ma'am?
Would you like to say anything else?
No, ma'am, that's all, unless anybody has any questions.
Just from my own knowledge, because I like doing restaurant work, are the parallel parking spaces served some purpose, or was there not two parking spaces there and you're just adding to?
So, the bump out of the restaurant on that side was actually cooler space. Unfortunately, with the current existing restaurant, they did not have adequate cooler space for the food. We actually, yes, sir, right there, so we actually bumped the cooler out on the exterior of the building, in turn making a little awkward parking. We have to-go on that side. Those parking spaces will only be used for to-go. There'll be dedicated parking spaces for to-go. There's a door right, as you can see on the, if you would, the front side of the cooler. That's an entrance to the building dedicated for to-go.
I have a question too...
Yes, ma'am.
...as well on the front of the building...
Yes, ma'am.
...where you've got those four or five parking spaces that you've illustrated bumping up against the building. Are you worried about, I mean, even with a bumper stopper there, there's still going to be some walking traffic?
Yes, ma'am, there will be, and that'll actually be elevated. It'll be elevated slightly, that it will be in a bar that we have to elevate to bring plumbing in, so we'll have an elevation on it.
So, it'll be elevated somewhat?
Yes, ma'am. And we'll have bumper stoppers in a significant area for error.
Commission, have any further questions?
I have a question. Number two, it says that the site plan will depict each unit space and the use, so you're good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that was a concern the staff have about what would go on back there, what kind of parking would be needed, and so you're comfortable with their...
Yes, but also in the information that I placed before you, the property owner didn't note that any future use of that large building would be office or retail, which would be fine with the amount of parking they have.
Right, so they have to know that upfront, though, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have a question for the staff. Is there a sidewalk along Airport Boulevard right there?
It looks like on the aerial that there is one in front of this development, all along the entirety.
Does the applicant know whether there's a sidewalk in front of the building? I've been by there many times, but don't really remember.
There is, in fact, a sidewalk on Airport Road. The sidewalk in question that is in front of the building actually lands into the culvert.
Because I think that's where a part of the Montlamar Creek Trail starts, right? Right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. We will move on to number eight, Slava Creek Subdivision. It has been recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? The applicant has indicated that he is in agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone else here to speak, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? That takes us to our deliberation phase. Number one, the Freysen Subdivision, 3116 Newton Drive.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That application passes. 250 Yand Street.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Air One Subdivision.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. SMHP Country Estates Subdivision.
Move for approval subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is passed. Number five, 5940 Leatherwood Drive, Bond Subdivision.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number six, 1204 Hillcrest Road.
Yes.
That has been recommended for a holdover to March 15th. I will make that motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Will be held over to March 15th, and we'll take it up again. The next one is 3673 Airport Boulevard. That has been recommended for a holdover as well. I'll make a motion to hold it over to March 15th.
No, no, that was the one that they handed out conditions.
That's the one.
Oh, that's right, I'm so sorry.
I'll move for...
I apologize for that.
I'll move for approval subject to the revised staff conditions.
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number eight, Slava Creek Subdivision.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Are we doing all three in the staff report, and all together in one? Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Olson, is there any further business?
Hey, good job.
Is there any further business?
No, ma'am. Just to remind everybody that because of Mardi Gras, we will not be having a meeting, second meeting in February, because it would be the 15th, and Mardi Gras week is always a difficult week to have a quorum.
So, the next meeting is...
Next meeting is the first of March. And Shayla, did you have anything you wanted to...
This meeting is adjourned. I apologize, y'all, for missing number seven. I made all my notes in another place, and that's not true.
We hope that you'll be present wherever...
At least, yeah. I would love to be in the place.
All right.
Oops.
Well, I'm...